All right. I have 7:30 by my phone, so we'll get started. Welcome and to everyone joining us for our July 20, 2021 meeting of the Troy Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to all our board members and guests, visitors, those who are here to present and make public comment. We're glad you could all be here, either, I guess, in person or perhaps through our Zoom meeting. So with that in mind, let's just get started. We have our agenda printed for tonight, and our first item is the roll call. And I will ask Mr. Evans, who I have us participating remotely, I think he'll continue to call the roll.
Yes, actually, we also have Jackie Ferenc who will call the roll. He will call us for all votes. Jackie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
All right, Jackie, can you call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. McCauley?
Here.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Here.
Mr. Forster?
Mr. Cancrie?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
And I see we have Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And let's move on to our second item, which is our reading of the procedure. And yes?
I think we missed somebody on the roll.
So, Mr. Chair, just, we would just indicate for the record that Mr. Rahman is here. He's not able to participate in the first item, but he should be indicated as present for the meeting minutes.
Correct, for the second item.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, thank you for that clarification. And for our procedure, if I could ask our vice chair, Mr. Eisenbacher, to read that for us?
Yes. The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by the Troy City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. Procedure: The board will hear the items in the order they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. Petitioner will be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner has made their presentation and answered any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and, when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, next door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertaining to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will open the public hearing. Well, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenbacher. Let's move on to our third item on the agenda, which is the approval of our minutes from last month's meeting, June 15, 2020, which were printed in our agenda materials. And I will open it up for discussion or if there's a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Second for Mr. Green. I think he's the tiebreaker. Can I get Ms. Ferenc, can we have a vote?
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Cancrie?
Yes.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Agenda, excuse me, the minutes are approved from June 2020. We will move on to our fourth item, which is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will consider the agenda for tonight approved. And at this point, we will move into our fifth item, which is the hearing of cases. We have two items on the agenda tonight, and we will start with the variance request at 2600 Livernoy. And I'll just, I'll just point out, as was pointed out to me by the city attorney, that for this particular matter, we have one of our alternate members, Ms. Chambers, sitting as a board member because one of our permanent members, Mr. Rahman, is a member of the Planning Commission for the City of Troy and had participated in related petition activity for this, so he's not eligible to vote and participate on this particular item here. So Ms. Chambers is going to sit in his stead for that tonight. So with that, item 5A, I will ask Mr. Evans if he is able to give us an overview of this position, this petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am able to give you an overview, and I've shared my screen. Hopefully, everybody can see it. And just so the boards are aware, I can't see anyone at the meeting, but I can hear everybody just fine. So referring to my presentation, as the chairman indicated, this is a variance request for property at 2600 Livernoy. And as printed in the agenda, it's it's a variance to convert the use from extended stay hotel to apartment units, so they're requesting two variances. The first one is to allow 23.35 dwelling units per acre, where the zoning ordinance permits 10 dwelling units per acre. And number two, to allow dwelling units to be 475 to 600 square feet in area, where the zoning ordinance requires 600 square feet of minimum area. Now, subject property is outlined in red on this aerial of the neighborhood. We have Big Beaver at the top. I-75 runs along the northern border of this property that's at the corner of I-75 and Livernoy. And to the east of the subject property are apartments, to the south is single family housing, and across Livernoy to the west is commercial uses. That's a close-up of the neighborhood, and I've overlaid the zoning map. And just so the boards are aware, the subject property and the property to its east is zoned identically as multiple family. To the south in the yellow is single family zoning. And across Livernoy, and of course, all directions across Big Beaver is zoned, or I-75, rather, is zoned Big Beaver. And there's an existing close-up of what the property looks like now. And I think the applicant has a presentation they're going to show you, but they're just providing cosmetic and some minor alterations to the site, but essentially, they want to maintain the existing room layout. And for that, they need the required variances in order to proceed. Now, they were before the Planning Commission in March of this month, and the Planning Commission could not take any action because they needed these variances. So depending on the outcome of what happens tonight, the next logical step would be to go back to the Planning Commission. So I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Evans? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Evans, for that presentation. And at this point, I will call the applicants up to the podium for 2600 Livernoy. I understand that they do have a presentation, Mr. Evans referenced it, that we may need to have our IT staff assist with getting that loaded for, in a moment. But if you're here to speak as to that, could you come forward and identify yourself and relationship to the property?
My name is Robert Sanchez. I work at TriCap Residential Group. We are the potential purchasers of this asset or property. I am the project manager and head of our asset management group with TriCap. We are, you know, very excited about this project because we're, we've seen over the past, you know, couple of years, the, even prior to the pandemic, the decline of many hospitality properties such as this, and find there's a great opportunity where there's need for housing, you know, for, for anywhere from, you know, young professionals to those single family, or single families out there. So we're very interested in converting this property into, into a multifamily property that we will both own and operate for the duration of the project. With me is Luke Bonner of Bonner Advisory Group. He's been helping consult with us in this project. And Wayne Chubb of Hobbs &amp; Black is the architect on this, on this project. So I'd like to bring up Luke just to help, you know, walk us through the project a little further.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Luke Bonner, Bonner Advisory Group, 1054 South Main Street, Ann Arbor, Michigan, the development consultant for this project. Rob had mentioned, we also have Hobbs &amp; Black architects on this team, also located in Ann Arbor, Michigan. Probably familiar with the site as outlined by Paul. I do want to say, I guess before I start, that both Paul and Brent in your planning department have been fantastic to work with, extremely professional. We do projects everywhere, and these guys were fantastic to work with. So hopefully, you already know that, but I wanted to let you know as well. It's very refreshing. The project as it currently sits today, there's 10 buildings, an office at clubhouse, a maintenance garage, and a total of 152 units on the property. The plan is to convert one-to-one hotel units to rental apartment units, and we plan on doing several renovations to the property, including facade improvements, adding additional parking, other site amenities, sort of the, the cooler, more trendier site amenities that you see in apartment projects these days, dog parks, grilling areas, cool improvements to the clubhouse, and then landscaping improvements and lighting improvements. Some of these improvements are things that we wanted to do. Some of these improvements are things that were also required by zoning in order to get us to in compliance. Here's an example, some sort of before and proposed after pictures. Here's a picture of the existing clubhouse. There you go. And here is rendering of what the new clubhouse would look like after renovation. The materials proposed are durable materials, so a composition of both stone and cement board or metal siding, depending on what's acceptable. Ultimately, the Planning Commission, we can go in either direction on that. Here's some more examples, changing out materials where we need to, definitely painting, a lot of painting, a lot of landscaping to get it from its current condition to, I think, to a level of expectation that the community has, and to be able to attract the sort of workforce housing, middle market type of renters that we are very desirous to have at this location. Some other examples, variations in color. We did go to the May 25 Planning Commission for their initial review, and there are a number of things that are listed here that were asked of us, all of which that we're willing to do, including the higher quality materials. We did have vinyl, for example, which we would replace with, like, the cement board siding. We will re-semit the landscape plan. There is request for more landscaping along the southern property line to the single family neighborhood to the south, and then also provide the overall landscape calculation, which we didn't have in our landscape plans when we submitted for preliminary review. I'll also say that, you know, every project is very different and unique, and while this seems like a sort of a simple conversion on the surface, one of the things that was, I'll say, very rewarding part of this project, we spent two different afternoons talking to the neighbors to the south, going door to door, and I think we probably ended up talking to about a dozen neighbors. We wanted to make sure we handed out information, let them know who we were and what we were planning. But the amount of people that we met, really good people, all very interested but concerned, I think, about some of the existing conditions at the property. In the packet for the preliminary site plan review of Planning Commission, the police department had also provided a letter stating that this is a little bit of a burden on the police department as well. And I think by converting this and having a properly managed property, doing background checks on residents, will certainly help stabilize the security of the neighborhood as well, which is something we totally and completely intend to do. But that was very much conveyed to us when we talked to the neighbors for the time that we spent with them. We do have two variance requests. Again, Paul went over this earlier, but there's really two. There's a density issue of 23, 23 units per acre versus what multifamily zoning allows at 10, and then the size of the units. Both of these situations are existing condition. This is how the property was built. And when we did actually take a look at, you know, if we were to come in compliance with the multifamily zoning, what would we really have to do and how would that impact the property? The first thing would, to come in compliance with the, the density requirement, would be to probably tear down about half the buildings on the property. But if we did that, it created almost like a second issue for us, which was you still have the issue of units being the size that they are. So then we looked at, which is an obvious question, can you combine units to make them larger? And this property, the units don't lie out side to side or back to back. They're sort of mismatched, if you will, and converting those or combining those units together would create an inefficiency in design and essentially a functionally obsolete building. So by combining the units and having that kind of floor plan and layout, as quirky as it would be, that's not how something would be built today versus the current, the current layout of the units are probably something you guys have actually seen, more micro units that have come online here in the last five years or so. In fact, I believe your, your urban residential zoning allows for units of this size. So these are, these are practical difficulties in terms of trying to comply with, with the zoning. It's an issue of, number one, tearing down half the property, but then even if we tore down half the property, the square footage of units would still exist, and combining those units would, would create a very inefficient and functionally obsolete structure. So, and I am here for any other questions if you have them. And I know our architect Wayne is just probably chomping at the bit to say something too, but, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Question?
Yep.
Go ahead. Sir Eisenbacher? Um, one is, do you plan these units to be furnished or unfurnished? Are they sort of like short-term business or are they more long-term residential?
They're traditional long-term, so ideally, you know, 12-month leases, unfurnished units going forward.
Okay. And then the second question is, is in front of this board, and I know in front of the Planning Commission, there've been quite a few property owners that have wanted to put in hotels within the city of Troy. You guys are doing the reverse. You're taking a property that was a hotel and wanting to make it residential. Are you seeing a huge market for these small, long-term rentals in other cities and in other places around the country? And do you have any information about that?
Don't have extensive information. We are doing a similar conversion in Southfield, or proposing to do similar in Southfield. There are funds being raised, and I can't recall some of the companies, but funds being raised specifically for this event. There is just been an impact really on these suburban or hospitality units outside of traditional downtown areas, and the majority are, have been suffering, occupancy is, pre-pandemic, occupancy is hitting well below 50%. So this is, this has been a trend that was starting prior, and then I think the pandemic really ignited it further. So we're seeing this further across the nation. And just to experience prior to, I actually did a conversion of a 1960s Holiday Inn in Los Angeles, similar thing. And so, and that was five years ago. So it's, it's been something that started a while back and is really becoming much more prevalent.
Okay, thank you. Sir. Mr. McCauley?
Excuse me, is every unit going to be 475 square feet? Are they all the same or some bigger, some smaller?
There are two styles of units, predominantly the 400, I'm forgetting my count. There's a 38 of the So yes, there are 114 of the 600 square foot and then about 38 of the smaller version. Am I reading, hold on, my eyes right? By far, okay, sorry.
That is like really small print.
I brought really unfortunately small print for my horrible eyes. So, I'm sorry, 114 of the 475 square foot, 38 of the 600. I mean, with some variations, but predominantly those are the basic styles.
Thank you.
Mr. Cancrie?
So what are the current recreational facilities in the clubhouse?
Currently, the clubhouse has a pool. There's a fitness center currently located on the second level. We're going to bring it down to the first level. Our goal with the clubhouse is really to keep everything on the first level, just A for ADA purposes, use purposes. It's a community that doesn't require that much square footage either for amenities. We are looking to add a dog park in there. There's an existing basketball tennis court, depending on what era you talk about it. We're going to convert that to ideally a dog park, so it'd be enclosed area so that people can release their dogs and just have a place to bring them, versus going outside the premises. Other than that, the, the, there's a, around the pool area, there's a concrete deck that we're proposing to put patrellis, outdoor kitchen, really basically a built-in barbecue, and some seating there. And then really looking to convert the interior of the clubhouse from, you know, the traditional hotel use, bringing more furniture and some separate areas that you can utilize for working from home. So instead of being in your unit, you can have another place, and it'd be more FFNE, more furniture that has kind of an enclosed area with it. So there's, it's a unique kind of use of that space that we're starting to see more prevalent now since the pandemic.
Thank you. One more question. Do you have an idea as to what percent of the large size or maybe the square footage is used for recreation area?
Of the, of the clubhouse itself or the entire?
No, of the 6.6 acres, how much space is for recreation?
Yeah. I think we, I remember the minimums required, and Wayne, if you could speak to, we exceeded the minimum, but I don't recall the top of my head.
And only reason I ask is because, I mean, normally, when we think about like a common recreation area, we kind of think of like a commons, which is like a big green space. But here, because of the existing hotel structure, it's kind of segmented into
Smaller.
Right, I mean, smaller areas, which are almost like they are attached to the individual building units and not a one large common area. And so that's why I was kind of thinking, is there a large green space outside, right, where the neighbors could gather?
So, and I appreciate that. There's, outside the clubhouse, there are two lawn areas between, do you have the picture of the plan? Can you put that up? Sorry. 60,000 of them of outdoor, if you go to the plan. So you see the two, there's two generally large green areas between the bottom half of the buildings, there's six buildings that you see there. There's two elongated sections we're going to utilize for, unfortunately, not a large green area, but more private seclusion, secluded areas for seating and just recreation. So unfortunately, we don't have a lot of green space outside to the east there between those buildings. We don't plan on building anything there, but unfortunately, they're not very large massive spaces.
We do, we did, and I think Wayne just confirmed that, we have about 60,000 square feet of common recreation space on the property, which exceeds the current zoning requirement.
Mr. Green?
If I'm understanding from the, from your submission, it actually looks, and from what you've said, it looks like you both currently, the only two variances you're looking at are the two that we're seeing tonight. You are currently already well within all of the rest of the other zoning elements, and by putting in a dog park where we currently have hard surface or soft surface, you're actually increasing, while it's not like trees and built, but you're increasing green space.
Correct.
And that green space would also serve as a buffer, some of it, not all of it, but some of it will serve as an additional buffer to the existing residential to the south.
We'll add additional landscaping along the property line to the south, through the request of the planning department.
Got it. Totally separate question, and I may be jumping the gun, particularly since the architect has not yet had his moment in the sun, but the, I very much appreciate that attempting to combine the floors as they are would not be a waste of money, but would be highly inefficient and less desirable. Has something like a two-story, not duplexes exactly, but has two-story unit combination been considered as part of this, where you have, I don't know, I don't know if they're stacked that way, but you have 475 on a 475 and a 6 on a 6 or something like that with stairs?
Yeah, we can let Wayne comment, but yeah, that's, that's kind of the issue. None of them are stacked or side by side.
They're all, they're all offsets, so.
Kind of jigsaw a little bit.
Wayne Chubb, Hobbs &amp; Black, 100 North State Street, Ann Arbor, Michigan. That's true, yeah. They're, the first floor and the second floor aren't stacked. Also, there is a mezzanine, the upper units do have a mezzanine too, so there's a small staircase to get you up to your bedroom and bathroom in that, that unit.
Yeah, that was essentially what I was thinking is, well, since they're definitely going to be divided down a hallway, can we stack them? But if that's not going to work, then that's
Yeah, and I mean, if you like to Yeah. And I mean, if you look at the elevations of the plans, you can see that there's two stair, there's two staircases that access. So you're really accessing four units from each side, and then they're kind of twisted and it's kind of an interesting.
Even to combine them so that you had two and literally, well, I suppose one and one on each side, that would just be.
Yes. I mean, you can see that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. You can see the way the buildings are carved back to, which makes, and that's not just on this side too, it also on the other side. So there's fireplaces and.
I have experienced living in something that is, at least from the outside, structured similarly. So I, I figured I'd ask, but I, I know what you're talking about.
We did look at it. It's really hard to describe without really digging into the plan drawings.
I think that covers my question. Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Does the existing traffic infrastructure support a modification to, or is there any data that converting this into residential versus short-term is going to have a major impact on traffic patterns? And is what's there currently support that change?
Yeah, I can, if I can, we haven't done a traffic study, but what's existing there, I think more than caters to a resident who typically will leave only a couple times a day versus there's a lot of traffic that's kind of constantly going, especially after hours, a lot of stuff that's going in and out. So from a residential standpoint, long-term residential standpoint, it actually stacks up pretty well from a traffic perspective.
Do you have any data on their current occupancy rates on average?
I do not. They didn't offer that to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
I, I actually had forgotten I had a question also relating to the existing infrastructure. Now, I, I could be wrong. I would assume that not so much like a gym where you assume 25% of members, if that actually show up. I would assume that a hotel builds infrastructure with the goal of being full. And so something like the current electrical infrastructure and the current sewer infrastructure would support permanent ongoing full occupancy. Is that an accurate statement to your knowledge?
I think it's accurate because these are tended to be a long-term, a long-term hotel anyways. They, they ultimately operated a much lower occupancy than what the apartments will, because that's just how hotels are, usually around 70% at a good time. But yeah, I think the infrastructure there suits what we're trying to do just fine.
And as you mentioned, and as we've read, the, the Troy Police Department has submitted a comment, I suppose, previous to your, prior to your planning commission presentation. The, the current safety concerns, part of it would be, I assume eliminated by removing even with long-term, what amounts to some level of tranchets, because you're, you're in place, the residence would be in place. But will there be any additional security amenities to ensure the security of both the prospective residents and also, I suppose the, the landscaping will help with it, but also the neighbors, potential neighbors?
Really, being operators for quite an extended period of time, we found that lighting's, you know, essential and we have, that's built into this and there's plenty of lighting there. This, the, the nature of long-term residency and just having your home is a true deterrent. And I've been places where you try to add cameras, that it really doesn't resolve anything. So it's, you're traditional, we're going to be changing out the locks and into more, you know, traditional residential locks with additional security there. But anything beyond that we find is just not, not beneficial in operating a multifamily. Unless you're a high riser, there's some variances there, but for this type of structure, then trusting that the neighbors are respecting their homes and, and having probably decent lighting outside of that, there's not much more we feel that would benefit them anymore. Yeah.
And one final one, I think. The, the sort of inverse of one of my colleague's questions, I understand that you have other projects in the works and completed that are similar conversions of, not microstructure, not micro apartments, but something smaller scale. Does, I know that there are, there is a bit of a constant call for additional lower costs, not necessarily low income, but lower cost housing, smaller housing for people who may be downsizing or retirees. But is that, is that something that you've checked on current needs in the city for something this size or current demand for something in the city this size? Does this slot in, I assume you picked the project for that reason, but does this slot in well for the community to your understanding? We don't, we don't want to go from one mostly vacant property to another mostly vacant property.
I appreciate that. We didn't do any extensive studies. It's more from experience that we've seen and, you know, some of the comp studies we've seen around here are much larger units, more expensive units. So we're finding that this was kind of a niche for, we look for the young professional through kind of the retiree or even the single parent needing a place to, to live. And again, nationwide, this is just a need we're seeing across the board. So a community such as Troy, which, you know, caters to, you know, just a great, great number of families, you know, great income, this seems to be a great need here from our opinion from what we see. And I wish I might, our CEO was here, he was actually born and raised from, in Troy. So he, he knows it quite well. His name's Brian Pritchard, went to Troy High School. So unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight for, he had to attend something for some of our employees. So I wish I could speak much from a higher level to what he, he knows from the back of his hand from growing up here. But from our experience, that is a need everywhere right now. We're finding young professionals cannot find anywhere to live. It's too expensive. And the retirees is another great example. Particularly with the pandemic, we are now seeing a need for housing they don't have to spend, you know, time to take care of, but they don't want to be in a senior living, not a community, but assisted living community, because pandemic has just shut them down. My mother-in-law is there, we can't see her. So still can't see her, even though things are lightening up. So we just feel that there is an outflux from, from those traditional models going to needs like this, and this is a great opportunity for, for those types of people.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions. We don't consider in application the costs that would be associated with the difficulty to the applicant. That's not something that we would consider as under our criteria. That's sort of what I hear and read from the materials, that there's, you know, an exorbitant cost, which I understand, to having to, to meet the, the zoning ordinance, basically having to knock down the entire complex, probably start from the scratch. So I guess, can, can you help me understand, you know, we have these five criteria and you addressed some of them, or all of them to some extent in your application. But can you help me understand as to the first element, which is trying to identify what is an exceptional characteristic of the actual property itself? And it gives examples like it's a narrow piece property, or it's shallow, or there's issues with, you know, wetlands, things like that. So what is it about the parcel itself that is presenting the difficulty that is giving rise to the variance requests?
Yeah, I can handle that. And Wayne, I don't know if you wanted to maybe give some thought on it as well. I mean, the, the honest to God's biggest practical difficulty is it's already built. I mean, this is the way it's built, and this is kind of what we have to deal with. So from that perspective, we took a look at, which is what we submitted, if we were to conform, what would it look like? And it wasn't so much the cost of tearing everything down, but it's a catch-22. If you try to cure one problem, you still have the other problem. And then if you try to cure the other problem, then you basically have that, you know, you have an inefficient, functionally obsolete unit. The land itself, I mean, we don't actually have any variance requests related to, you know, landscaping or drive approaches or signage or any of those things, which would be sort of constricted by the layout of the land itself and the way the parcel was developed. We actually are in full compliance with the ordinance when it comes to all of those land-related issues. You know, these are very much issues related to the fact that these are the existing conditions and how do you manage something like this? Because the questions are really, really good. And I'll give you a good example that's happening in Sterling Heights right now at the corner of, it's around 15 and Van Dyke. If any of you are familiar with the old Best Western Sterling Inn, which is the Wyndham Garden Hotel, that is being acquired for a hotel-to-apartment conversion. The difference there though, it's a double-loaded hallway. So you've got units that go, you know, basically in parallel to each other and they're perfectly sort of stacked. So there, they're actually able to combine a lot of units because they go right next to one another and they don't have sort of the jigsaw layout that we do. I'm not sure if I totally answered your question, but you know, in terms of the physical land itself, we meet all of the requirements under the zoning. It really is an existing building condition that we're having to deal with.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board members? Mr. McCollough?
Just a quick question. Your other projects, have they been under government subsidized housing use at all? Or are these, they're all?
These are all, we'll call workforce housing or market rate housing.
Just curious, price point that you guys are looking at? Just has no bearing on this, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's a good question.
The range to sign a gross rent is about between $900 and $1,100 a month.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr.?
I can see that in your presentation, you looked at the scenario about combining units and, and that's not practical. And I can see that, like combining the, some of the one-bedroom inefficiencies. But did you look at any other scenarios such as say, instead of converting all the 152 units, maybe you tear down one building or say two buildings and creating a common space and project would still be a viable project for you, I mean financially? Did you look at any of that, of those scenarios?
On a financial basis, the, with the cost of the, that we have to put for just all the siding, all the infrastructure, it would not be prudent for us to move forward with the project if that was the case.
Mr. Green?
I would say that it's our fourth point actually also. I would be hard pressed to see how this is not, the, the point is the characteristics which make compliance with dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by the current or previous owner. The characteristics are created by the previous owner, the builders. So I, I don't see any way around that whatsoever. However, I do, I do wonder if, if this would be more difficult or less difficult for another property of the same zoning. So obviously the zoning does allow for it as it currently is the hotel. But are there, for example, other properties where they are 600 to 800s instead of 475 to 600, where this would be a non-issue?
That's a good question. I think most likely not, because hotel rooms in general aren't that big. So doing a one-to-one conversion on a hotel property like we're doing is probably going to be very similar. I think what the, the idea of combining units and some of those other properties would be because it's an easy layout side to side and you can create more two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units, which is something that we, we couldn't do at this property. So I think it's likely that you will see, and like Rob said, this is a trend, you probably will see other projects like this coming into the community to do these conversions because the multifamily rental market is in such high demand right now. And properties like this, and because you guys have seen like a hotel boom, right, over the last five years or so. So with that hotel boom comes other hotels that lose their franchise because they haven't been kept up properly, they haven't been managed properly. So someone who may have been a Holiday Inn or Red Roof Inn or Hawthorne Suites loses their franchise rights. And ultimately, that same parent company will build new hotels in that market because that's now substandard. And so then you're left with a property that kind of falls in disarray or is very badly managed after the fact because they don't have the same kind of franchise revenue coming in. And you come up with situations like this that are primed for, for our group to kind of jump in and take advantage of a, a great market like Troy.
From an environmental perspective, what would, as we said, we can't look at cost, from an environmental perspective, what does doing this conversion look like compared with if you were in for it, a knockdown rebuild? Like what is, yeah, that's, that's my take on it in theory, but I'm, I'm curious how, how you see that. You have more experience in construction. Is, is this something where, I mean, there's going to be waste taking off the existing vinyl or whatever, but I would assume that in the case of a knockdown, there would be limited ability to reuse those materials in either your structure or any other. What sort of impact, what sort of time on, it's actually a separate question, what sort of time on refurbishing and reconstruction are you looking at in this situation? But how, how more or less impactful approximately-ish do you feel this is compared with something where you would be destroying what's there to, to build something that would comply?
I have no idea how to answer that question. I'm sorry.
We'll skip that one to the second.
I mean, ultimately, this isn't a product that's built with like lead, lead paint, asbestos-containing materials and that sort of thing. So it's not, you know, if you were to tear this down, would there be an environmental cost to tearing it down?
Doing landfills would, oh, that's, that's a differential versus minimal.
True. And you probably wouldn't reuse any of these materials into the new construction project for certain. So yeah, I mean, I guess there is some kind of landfill impact of the, of the construction debris, but nothing of an environment, like a true environmental hazard.
Got it. And so what sort of timeline would you look at for the refurbishment?
We can, we're planning about 10 months, under a year, well within a year. Some of it's going to be sequenced more with coordinating leasing. So we move building to building, but it can be done a little quicker if we, we choose and we may end up doing that. But we're assuming right now a conservative schedule of about 10 months.
And are you looking at a lot of heavy equipment to do that? Or is this mostly just manpower doing stuff like painting?
Manpower, just trucks and some dumpsters here and there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We may call you back following the public hearing. Appreciate your presentation and answering our questions. At this time, I will open up our public hearing for this, this variance request for 2600 Livernoy. If there is any member of the public who would like to address the board, please feel free to make your way up to the podium. And as was discussed earlier, if you could identify yourself, name and address and relationship to the property.
Hi, my name is Jim Davison and I live at 104 Star, which is the residential street that borders right on the.
Sir, could you just repeat your name? Because sir, we're saying it as you were coming to the.
Yeah, Jim Davison. So from like the parking lot of the hotel, I've walked through there before. I can see the front window of my house because I'm right on Star there. And I don't have any access to police reports or anything, but there does seem to be a lot of activity there. And I know I've, myself have heard like at 3:30 in the morning about a month or so ago, gunshots there. And there's been at least two of those since it's been reported in the Troy Times. And I noticed on Friday nights, they have security people there all the time checking everybody in and out. And so, I mean, I'd be in favor of what these guys got planned. It sounds like a better solution there than the existing situation in my opinion. So that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone else rushing up to the podium. Ms. Ferenz, is there anyone on our Zoom?
So Chair Bosnberg, there is one attendee. So if that person wants to raise their hand to be recognized as public comment for this item, that person can do that now. Okay. I do not see that. No.
Okay. We don't have any public comment from the Zoom and there's no correspondence voicemails. So I will close the public hearing. So I will close the public hearing. And at this point, uh, I'll bring it back to the members of the board for discussion on the variance request. Anyone wish to be recognized, Mr.?
Well, I, I kind of get a little insight into this project in a couple directions because I, I'm a real estate broker, so I deal with the demand side for people hunting for housing. I'm also a resort owner, so I see the other side of the hotel industry and what's happening with it. So two things upfront, I mean, the current use for property, the whole model's dying on the vine. Like, I mean, this is not going to get better, it's going to get worse. As it sits, it's not going to come back in some miraculous recovery or anything like that. It's a slow decline. What, what's happening with police presence and all that, that's, that's an issue for these size facilities all over the place. So in its current state, it does not function and there's a massive demand for what it is they're looking to put in. We're consistently hearing requests from both young professionals who just need basically a place to sleep because they're working all the time, they don't care too much about it being another couple hundred square feet larger. The same thing with retirees, they need a place to go, they want to stay in the community, they don't have anywhere to be. So the demand for the proposed use is high and the, uh, value of the current use is, is very low. Also, as far as the police reports and all that, uh, there's a very different type of tenant between these two. When you talk short-term people who are coming in, uh, to occupy the property for short periods, it's not anywhere near the same as a, a tenanted situation. The, the, the type of tenant coming in on a long-term basis, there's a lot more weight that goes into them because it's, all their, their stuff is there. They're embedded in the area, they have, uh, it's not a transient place for them, so they just, they react to property very differently. I mean, the people that come to my resort act in a 100% different way than my tenants in my, my regular properties act. It's just a completely different response. So, um, I'm, I'm for this proposed use. It's really hard to overlay all of our normal criteria that we, we normally look at over a commercial property because the reality is we're not talking about a, a, you know, parceled subdivision here. This isn't like, each one of these are the same. This is a pretty unique use of a unique piece of property that's in the city. So to just try and compare it to, well, is everything else in the neighborhood like it? There isn't another parcel that's just like this within an immediate area. So, um, I, I don't know exactly how to structure, you know, a, a, make a move for it. I don't even know how to word that correctly, but I am for the, the concept. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. Any other board members would wish to discuss? Mr. McCauley?
I'd like to echo Mr. Desmond's sentiments on that. Having known people that have traveled to the area for work, I've known companies that have rented long-term facilities like this. So when they bring, when they bring workers in for a year or maybe two years or something like that, they already have a place in place for them. It's easy access to Birmingham, Rochester, Royal Oak, I mean, wherever you want to be. So from that standpoint, this is a trend. They don't, like you say, they don't care about size, they're looking for a nice, clean, nice place to stay, a studio or a one-bedroom. And, um, with the decline of that, that used to be a residence inn, which was intended for business, people coming in for a week at a time. But as it's gone downhill over the years, I'm sure they lost their franchise tag and that's why it's a Hawthorne Suites and next it'll be abandoned. So I, even though it's smaller than I'd like to see, and unfortunately they can't combine them, which I would love to have been able to see, but I'm in favor of this project also because I think that it gives us an element that to our segment of population that are mid twenties to early thirties that are working and moving from place to place.
Mr. Kenkri?
Well, I think, um, the proposal, I think, is a good one because there is a need in Troy for young professionals and for retirees or single, um, a single person, because we don't have that. But the only difficulty I think here is that our zoning ordinance takes efficiency to four-bedroom and puts all of that under one multifamily, uh, concept. And it, it doesn't make a distinction between a efficiency and a, and a one-bedroom. But I think there is a need in the Troy community, there are, um, there are people who are looking for this kind of a, um, housing. So even though it doesn't fit exactly within what a zoning ordinance requires, maybe they are ahead of the game here and zoning needs to evolve over time. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I'm not quite finished, but I've been trying to work out, just to clearly iterate my thoughts on the matter, to cover point A of our criteria. To my mind, this, this arguably does fit. There, there are no other actual properties in this specific instance of the zoning district. In other extended state hotels zoned areas, this problem would either be very similar or if they are more stacked units, as per the one referenced in Sterling Heights, this would be a much easier project to work with. So this is substantially more difficult because they are not stacked units or with a central corridor where you could take one side and the other side and easily partition into two-floor units or something like that. This is a situation where you have a jigsaw puzzle and nobody wants to live in those. And so this becomes a much more difficult project or, or really stay in them. So whether it remains a hotel or changes, um, it becomes more difficult than it would be for some other properties in the area. To point B, is it related to these premises specifically? Yes, obviously. This is not about, um, there are combinations made for, but this is not about the residences to the south, nor is it related to the office building to the north or the post office or the roads nearby. They're well within compliance already. I believe the max allowed in some cases, and I may mistake is 35.5 buildout and they're at 16.5. They're well within, or 16.6, well within existing zoning and, um, easements and, and everything else there, they're well within that. This is not a personal problem. The problems presented are, uh, problems that would be encountered either by the existing owners, were they to look at refurbishing the existing space, uh, which is, we're not allowed to consider money, but like it's, it's not useful to them to do that because it's a declining model, as mentioned by my colleague. Uh, and were they to refurbish or, or, um, reconstruct, anything like that, they would be looking at a, a similar set of difficulties. Point D, uh, the, the characteristics which make the compliance with dimensional requirements difficult must not have been created by the previous or, or pardon, a previous or the current owner. They were, I cannot get around that in, in any way. But, uh, that said, our final point is the proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located. It will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property or unreasonably increase the congestion in public streets or increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety or unreasonably diminish or impair established property value within the surrounding area or in any other respect, impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. And as I think we've covered fairly clearly, including the neighbor comment or potential neighbor comment, um, this, and, and the police comment, this would, uh, not only improve that, it would hopefully additionally partition to, uh, make the residents to the south feel safer and more, um, not separate exactly, but, um, contained within their own homes. They, they wouldn't have to worry about their neighbors to the north. And there would be less crime likely, there would likely be less crime and less, uh, transients because people would be tied to the, uh, the places where they live and that tends to decrease crime. Additionally, that's going to help with the chance of fire. There's, there's, you know, people are more careful with things that are, whether they own them or are renting them and using them, they're more careful with things that are theirs. And while some of the, the questions about traffic remain to be seen, it's not going to, um, to my mind, it's not going to impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals or welfare. In fact, I think this, this is potentially something which could greatly benefit the health, safety, comfort, uh, morals and welfare of the city by increasing, economically increasing the, the diversity of the residents, bringing in people who would like to join our fair city and, and make it a more welcoming place. And while I do not know, um, the, the history of the development, uh, by, I'm going to get this wrong, by, uh, by the company who has brought the petition, uh, they, they do it all over the country and so they are experienced with managing properties and purchasing properties and renovating properties. And in fact, by not reconstructing, they're actually, uh, looking to both environmentally and from a sound pollution, neighbor benefit-wise, minimize the impact of a change to greatly improve the area. So broadly, I am very much in favor of this project for those reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else or is there a motion coming to the floor? Mr. Green?
I have a question for the city attorney. And this is about the limits of what we can put in a motion because I do have a slight pause about a blanket, um, uh, variance so that this could be done in future and in fact theoretically, while it would require new construction, uh, having it be a variance that runs with the property in perpetuity, that would potentially allow future rebuilds without consideration of our zoning ordinance. And I want to know if we can tie that to the current ownership.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, no, it, it is something that needs to, to run with the land, that, that is the standard that you need to comply with. And, and you are right to be concerned about the presidential impact.
I have a question.
Yes.
The city attorney, uh, in the event that they did decide to do a future development that also added additional 475 square foot units to the property, that still has to go through planning and they still have a veto component to prevent an overbuild of the facility? Am I correct in that?
There will be a necessary site plan approval and with everything that is required by the zoning ordinance, I think it's very difficult for them to add another building. Perhaps the developer could, could, and, could address that, but I think my, just looking at it and, and maybe Mr. Evans also has, has, uh, some input on that, but I think it would be very difficult to add another building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Eisenbacher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the one exceptional characteristic I see for this property is the fact that it's situated next to the freeway and it is zoned MF, multifamily. It's not zoned residential. I mean, it's got a, a boundary right on the side where the residential is. Um, the, let me make sure I get this right. The one side is bordering on another MF zoned property, another apartment complex. So the current use is consistent with it being an apartment building, but it's currently used as a hotel right now. Um, I agree with many of the points Mr. Green brought forth, um, in terms of how this fits our statement of practical difficulty. Um, and the topography isn't on the actual property, but it is the topography next to it. You can't turn this into necessarily a super high-end property when you're immediately adjacent to a freeway and the noise associated with a freeway. The use as presented by the petitioner is very appropriate for the land. Re, redevelop existing properties. I looked back at the old pictures on the City of Troy website. This was built in the late seventies, um, well before our current zoning ordinance. I also believe that ties into the hardship of the changing zoning ordinances, the changing regulations on the property compared to the, the static as built in the late 1970s or in 1980, condition that has progressed forward to today. It's the same buildings as was originally built. So we've spoke, we spoke quite a bit in our training class two meetings ago about the characteristics, item D, about being created by a current or a previous owner. That's at least two owners ago where they laid out the properties and set the site plan and the geometry of the buildings. And as been demonstrated in our packet, it's not easy to combine the units because of how they are laid out. It's, it doesn't work to combine units. And the conditions have changed since that time. So given all of what Mr. Green said and, um, what I heard in testimony from the, uh, from the applicant, I would like to move the item for approval.
Is there a second?
With the variances noted.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Green?
Yeah. Second. One of us seconds, yeah, second.
Okay, so we have a motion that's seconded to grant the variance request. Is there any discussion at this point? I guess I'll just add my own comment and that is I do appreciate obviously the merits of the plan. I think they have been very well documented. The presentation was well done through the planning commission. I simply don't know that, um, given what we are and what we're charged to do and the, the elements of what we're supposed to consider, that, that what we're asked to do, um, that the property itself has some unique characteristic. And with, going back to our training and how we are, understand our zoning ordinance and the Michigan statutes and so forth, um, you know, variances are something to be rather sparingly granted. And while I certainly see again the merits of the proposal and the problems that currently exist with the use of the property, I don't, I, I don't support the motion and I don't support the variance. Mr. Green?
Thank you. Um, I respectfully very much, um, understand where, where you're coming from, Mr. Chair. And, um, I can, I can see how, how one might come to, to, uh, choose to, to vote against the proposed motion. The only thing that I would note is in this particular case, um, the zoning board of appeals, and I'm quoting from our statement, "The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by city council to decide on requests." And while this is a large, uh, multi-state, potentially international and not sure company, which is looking to, to add to their portfolio, um, the people who would be living there would be our neighbors. I actually, this is not to say I have a vested interest one way or the other, I have no financial or anything monetary interest, but I live, uh, just under a mile away from this and, um, and consider myself something within that, that very specific neighbor area. And, um, while I have not myself personally experienced any spill-over crime or, or noise from that property, I, I feel like this is something that, that benefits the city, that this is something where, um, these are people that we would want as our neighbors. And so for that reason, as, as all of the other ones that I've, I've noted, I will be voting yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green. Did Mr. Eisenbacher, did you have anything else to add? Okay. All right. I think we have the motion on the table and we are prepared for a vote. Ms. Ferens?
Sorry, I had to find the right button. Um, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Kenkri?
Yes.
Mr. Bosnbrook?
No.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
All right. Motion is granted. Thank you, gentlemen, for your appearance tonight. Appreciate it. And we will move on to our second item tonight. And as part of that, we want to thank Ms. Chambers for sitting in on this, this matter. And we'll welcome Mr. Ramon to the, to the board table. And we'll welcome Mr. Rahman to the board table. And when, whenever Mr. Evans is prepared, we, if he could give us his presentation for the variance request at 2887 East Waddles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is a variance request for a property at 2887 East Waddles. The request is to enlarge the existing single-family home and construct a shed. The property is in the NN, which stands for Neighborhood Node Zoning District. The use of the property is non-conforming because single-family residences are not permitted in the NN zoning district. The zoning ordinance prohibits enlarging structures devoted to non-conforming uses. The home was originally constructed prior to the establishment of the NN zoning district. This is an aerial of the neighborhood with the subject property on East Waddles outlined in red, as you can see on the north side. The subject property and the two properties to the east are used as single-family residential as are properties to the west and northwest. There's a close-up of the neighborhood and all these properties here are used for single-family residential. But the zoning, everything in yellow is single-family residential zoning and everything you see here in this purplish color is Neighborhood Node zoning. So they're on the border.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
I think you're, well, something is not moving because we still have just the language of the variance request on our screen.
All righty, let me do that over again.
Sorry about that. Just wanted to make sure.
Thanks for letting me know. Can we see there, is it moving now?
Yes. Now we can see the map.
Great, okay, and it's moving. Good, good. So I'll just start over. This is the overview of the neighborhood. Property is outlined in red, the north side of East Waddles. Moving on to the next slide. The subject property and the two properties to the east are used for single-family residential as is the property adjacent to the west and the northwest. I've overlaid the zoning designations and colors here. Everything you see in yellow is zone, single-family residential. Everything you see in this purplish color is zone, Neighborhood Node, including the subject property. And there's a close-up of the subject property itself, picture of it from the road. This is their site plan with Waddles at the bottom. And I've outlined in red the proposed areas of new construction with the addition to the house and also the shed and the backyard. They provided a kind of a mock-up of where the addition to the house is going to go. So that concludes my presentation on this. In summary, they'll need a use variance in order to proceed with their proposed plans. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Does any board member have a question for city staff? Okay. I think it's just to ask the city attorney that Mr. Motzni, your colleague, did prepare a memo outlining that this is a use variance? And so our standards for voting are different than our normal dimensional variance?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that is true. And then also just indicate that it is, requires five affirmative votes. If you were to approve it, it does have a supermajority requirement as well. And if the board has any questions, I'm happy to delve into it, but you all have the memo.
Any questions? No? Okay. At this time, I will ask whoever is here on behalf of the applicants for 2887 East Waddles, if they would please feel free to step forward to the podium. Or perhaps they're participating by Zoom, I don't know. Welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. You could just identify yourselves and your address and so forth.
My name is Jesus Rivera, 2887 East Waddles Road, Troy, Michigan.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
And my name, my name is Juanita Rivera, and I am his wife. And we both live at 2887 East Waddles Road.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Green?
I noticed that you're currently walking with a cane and I don't know, is this mic live? Yes. Would you be willing to allow the petitioners to be seated for their presentation?
If they'd be more comfortable, that would be fine. I don't, would you be happy to?
If they want to.
This is hopefully if we can just, if you want to speak, to be able to speak into a microphone that can pick up your voice, just so we can capture it for the meeting. You're welcome, sir.
Yes, thank you.
So if you, whoever would like to start, feel free, we have your materials and had a chance to review them, but whatever you'd like to bring to the board as to your application, we'd be happy to hear from you tonight.
Yes, we had this house, that was, sorry. This house was built for us and this gentleman here is our builder. And it was Mr. Tom Ward. And this house was completed in 2000, approximately 2016. And we have the two bedrooms upstairs. And we have, my husband has been deteriorating in his health. He's a disabled Vietnam veteran and he's been going downhill. So we find that he cannot take the stairs up anymore. We need a bedroom downstairs. And he's had knee surgery and he needs another knee surgery. And to sleep on a sofa downstairs is hard and for me to care for him, there's not enough room to have a bed downstairs. He, he's 100% disabled and he's had quite a few problems. And he's disabled from the Army. He's an Army veteran, disabled. He falls, he's got, he has seizures and he's got severe PTSD. And he's got a pacemaker. He's got many problems that, I mean, he went to fight for us, for me, for our country. And now we need your help. We need a bedroom downstairs. And he can't take the stairs anymore, so I go up to sleep, I rush down. And if he goes up, he can't come down very often. And then if I hear a thump, I'm like, he fell. Because he falls quite a bit. He's got so many injuries, so many scars. And he also has to have cystoscopy every six months because a mass that was found in his bladder. And they did take it out, but they have to go every six months to do the surgery. And he can't take the stairs because he's got to have the bladder and I have to keep emptying the bag at night. So we need a bedroom downstairs. We would really appreciate it if you could help us.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you want to, this is the builder, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, could you identify yourself, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, my name is Tom Ward. I am an architect and a builder. And I'd like to just elaborate a little bit more if I could on the background of this project. Originally, Mr. and Mrs. Rivera purchased this land, was a very small little ranch residence. And we prepared architectural drawings to expand it, put a second story on it, and covered porch on the front and back to make it a little bit nicer. At that, my understanding is, Mr. Chair, is that at the time when we put those drawings in, they were approved and the renovation was allowed to go forward. However, it was currently zoned NN at that time. It was a, it fell through the cracks in Troy and it was accidentally approved for them to renovate it and to move into it. The reason why they purchased this particular home is that their family that are here today live right next door to them, on the next street over Morningdale, is that the name of that street? Yeah, their backyards actually meet. And the idea was that this was going to be their forever home. They're not going to be moving from this residence. They will stay here to the last of their days so that they can be with their family. So that was the purpose of purchasing this property. Now, the original home did not have a bedroom on the first floor. It was always a colonial residence in design when we renovated it. Now with the changing health requirements of Mr. Rivera, it would be very beneficial to them if they could add this merely 16 feet by 16 foot three bedroom addition off the back of the house. It would give them a place where he could stay and not have to do the stairs. And so that's what we're asking for. And I would like to emphasize, they are staying here and they're allowed to stay in this house for the rest of their time. They're not, the zoning ordinance does not say that they have to be evicted or the use has to change in their lifetime. So since they're going to be in this residence, we'd like to at least make it a little bit more accommodating for them as they wind out their years. And in addition to that, we wanted to put a 10 by 15 shed in the back so that Mr. Rivera can store some of the things that he likes to tinker with.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you may have some questions from members of the board. Mr. Eisenbacher?
Okay. Thank you both for your presentation and your information. One of the unfortunate facts of this board is we can't consider the personal, the personal needs. It's the matters that run with the land. But I do find it very compelling to have a first-floor residence anywhere with, or a first-floor bedroom anywhere within the city. I don't believe that's a personal item. In terms of this project, were you the architect and builder for the original expansion?
Yes, I had a business partner at that time as well. But yes, we performed the architectural and we built it, as is the case with this current project if it moves forward.
And that's, so that shows the quality of the drawings are the original drawings that you prepared and then now you're adding on for the information in our packet?
Yes.
Okay. The foundation for the shed, are you planning it to be a permanent foundation, concrete placed, or is it going to be less permanent?
Yes, sir, it will be a permanent shed. It will have, I believe they're four-inch by 24-inch rat walls that go around the perimeter in accordance with code. And then it'll have a poured slab and then the shed will be built on top of that. It will be stick-built, it's not a kit. In fact, the architecture is matching the home, as is the building addition, same materials.
Okay, that was my next question. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Rahman?
First, Mr. Rivera, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you for your support.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is I just want to make sure that I understood the drawing right. Did the bedroom that we are thinking on the first floor is going to be in the back of the house, right?
That is correct. It'll be a one-story, 16 by 16 three, one-story addition that's coming off the first level.
Right. And it was a small house before 2015, right?
That's correct. It was a very small house.
And it had a bedroom at that point?
Sure. It had a bedroom, for sure. I think it was under 1,000 square feet.
Right, right. And then city allowed to make it kitchen and some other things without a bedroom and then you were allowed to have two bedrooms?
Yes. The renovation that we performed back then put, I think, three bedrooms upstairs, wasn't it? Three bedrooms? But we went down to two. Two bedrooms upstairs. We renovated the kitchen, we put covered porches on the front and the back so we could span the roof over it nicely. And so it came out, you know, to be a pretty nice-looking colonial residence.
Okay. And now situation arise that we have to have another bedroom?
On the first floor.
Right. And then this is not, this is a use variance, this is not dimensional variance. So we don't have to worry about the five points, you know, so.
That's correct. It is within all of the setbacks, land use, density, that type of thing, yeah.
So I think, you know, with this situation, it's pretty compelling that we should approve this request, is my position.
Are there any other, Mr. Desmond?
I just want to clarify, just, I mean, I'm hearing it, but I just want to actually, just for my own, so this was a non-permitted use that the city said, hey, no problem, build it and live in it.
What happened was, as I was saying, the Riveras purchased this little house because it was next to their family. And they have another family, two family members that are on that same street. So they wanted close proximity with their kids as they age, so they could stay in their homes. Then, I forgot the nature of your question, I'm sorry.
Basically relative to the zoning, the city just said, yes, you can rebuild and live in this as a residential property even though it's a non-permitted use. At some point, somebody said, yes, that's no issue.
What, from what I understand from Mr. Chair is that it accidentally was approved at that time for us to go ahead with this renovation. It had been previously zoned NN, Node Zoning. And it slipped through the cracks. They didn't catch it and they approved the renovation, which then allowed them to move in, call it home, and start their lives there. Now we have this change in his health situation and, you know, we'd like to be able to have that access for him on the first floor.
Was that just an approval of a permit or was that a variance then?
It was not a variance at that time. We just put the drawings in straight up and they came back all good.
Okay, so none of those permits run with the land then in that context? Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted clarification, it was a little confusing for me. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Just to fully settle that timeline, house existed, zoning came into effect, house was non-compliant, but it was existing. Then you put in the renovation request, it was approved, you weren't told you needed a variance, you moved forward, slipped through the cracks, as you say.
That is correct.
And then today you're looking to, again, take this grandfathered property. This is a house that has been lived in, will continue to be lived in, that's, unless it gets knocked down by somebody.
At least in their lifetime.
Right. To, to add this or modify this to allow for facilitating, facility of continued living there for health purposes. Got it. Thank you.
Any other members? Mr. Desmond?
I'm not sure if this is for Paul, maybe it's Paul, but my understanding of Neighborhood Node zoning is to take a transitional area and move it from an existing use, in this case residential, into commercial use or a different use. Is that correct?
That's potentially, partially the goal. As a matter of fact, we do list in the ordinance, and I could bring that up while the board's talking, the goals of the Neighborhood Nodes. And I think we give a more accurate answer on that if you'd like. Is that something you'd like me to do while the board's discussing this?
Okay.
All right, I'll, yeah.
I mean, the core thing that I'm looking at, if that is the intention, which is what I've always, not just in our municipality but in other municipalities, is that concept is, you know, right on, you know, nodes of streets where they're, you know, transitioning. And there, if you were to use a commercial property in this obviously residential area, it would be completely out of characteristic for the rest of the neighborhood. Everything there, up and down, that I could see is residential. So, I mean, I would find it more confusing for someone to show up here and say, I want to put a 7-Eleven there than I want to put an addition on my existing house when everything around it is also residential. So personally, I'm in support of a variance for this because it seems like, I'm kind of confused as to why it's even an issue, but that's it, just a comment.
Mr. Green? Mr. Green?
I, on the other hand, am actually struggling with this one for the reasons noted by our Chair, Mr. Bosenbrook. This is a different request. A use variance is not as many as possible. A use variance requires meeting all of the conditions. And so, just, just to, I'm not going to read them all, but you, you can't use it for what's allowed to be zoned there right now. It's, I mean, not reasonably. You'd have to knock the home down, move them out, change it. That's, that's not reasonable. The, the condition or situation of the property or the intended use is unique to the property. It's not common to the area. And that, the, the way the land is makes it uniquely difficult to earn a reasonable return without some adjustment. The, the only question here would be the fourth sub-point, which is, the board may consider such unique situations as, in this case, any other situation deemed by the board to be extraordinary, but that is specific to the, the conditions of the land, as opposed to in this very specific case, well, in a use case, the land and what is on it. It's not going to, our third one is, it's not going to alter the essential character of the area. That's how it is right now. It's just a little bit more of it. Capacity and operations won't be changed, at least for now, same residence. Immediate practical difficulty was not self-created by the applicant. Certainly an argument for that with the accidental slip-through. That's sort of a one way or the other. And there, I would agree, there is no other immediate administrative relief available to the applicant, although I do have a question for you, which is specifically point six, that one about, well, not relief, pardon, not point six, specifically about the architecture. Looking at it, there, there's certainly some stuff on that ground floor that makes it tricky. The kitchen is off to the side. The living room is a fairly, it's not a large space, but it's, it's a, it's a living room. It's a big area. And then there's a mudroom and I couldn't quite tell what's up in that corner. What, what's, what's there right now?
Right next to the addition?
As it exists right now.
As it exists right now, there is a rear covered porch sitting area. That will be cut back to about half of its width in order to allow the bedroom addition to come off what is currently a computer niche right now, off of a, I guess you might call it a study area or a den area.
Got it. So there is, there's currently like a den, study, computer niche, mudroom. Did I see there's a small bath up there or no?
There is a small bathroom that's right next to where this bedroom would be. It's kind of nice the way that it worked out because it's very accessible to the bedroom. And that's also the bathroom for the first floor.
I, I hate to ask it, but is this something where you could put a bedroom on the first floor by knocking out those other current use spaces and convert some of the upstairs or part of the area to a computer space or whatever that might be?
I don't know. I mean, certainly it's possible, we, well, let me put it this way. The dining area is quite limited off the kitchen. It's very small. The space that would have to be eliminated to get a bedroom in there is that living room area or that den area. The den area is fairly small for a bedroom. So I would say, I would want to have a living room in the home. And I think a den is a very reasonable need as well. So I would say that it would be very difficult to try to incorporate that into the existing footprint on the first floor. Would you agree?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any, Mr. McCauley?
The existing computer nook, what is the size of that?
It's very small. It's about, would you say, four feet? It has an archway that goes through the center of it. It's just like two little alcoves on either side of a little archway.
What's between that and the existing bathroom? There's like a little...
Currently, the bathroom actually opens into that den area, right? That study area?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's not off the living room. It's off that little den area.
Mr. Kankri? I'm sorry, did Mr. McCauley?
I'm just not understanding what this one spot is on there. If that's part of the bathroom.
There's a walk-in closet.
There's a shower in there.
WIC is walk-in closet.
Oh, yeah, there will, excuse me.
I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at the existing computer nook and right to the right of it, right behind the existing bathroom?
Shower.
There is a shower and a toilet and a vanity in there, the existing.
That's the shower then, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
There will be two walk-in closets in the bedroom addition.
Mr. Kankri?
So you're currently living in the house, so you are using it as your residence. And what you're doing is you want to put a addition, so you want to continue to live there and continue to use it as your residence. You're not doing anything to change the usage, right?
No, no, sir.
Right. So, but we are here asked to look at, to deny a, let us say, a, the use variance, even though you are not doing, whatever you are doing, you are not changing the usage.
No.
Right. And it says that to deny the use variance means applicant has failed to demonstrate it cannot be used for any uses allowed in the current zoning district. Now, if you have to demonstrate that, you actually have to sell the house and move out because it is a, because it is zoned as a non-residential property. I mean, I can see that you are kind of in a situation where you, you really have to sell the house and move because it is right now a non-residential property. You are in extremely difficult situation because the zoning in that area just changed and essentially said, you are actually doing something that you should not even be doing. You really should sell the house and move. And I find that a very heavy burden on you.
Yes.
So you are not doing anything to change the usage. You have been living there. You want to add a, you want to put an addition and you want to continue to use it just the way you want it to be. So I'm in favor of letting you put the addition.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just add to that. And the reason why they wanted to stay here is because of the immediate family. They, Juanita often babysits the grandkids and they're back and forth all the time, meals, and they can keep an eye on their aging parents that way. So that was the idea.
My mom's 97.
Ma'am, could you, if you want to speak?
My mom is 97. My mom was widowed when she was 29 and I was six. Never remarried. I take care of my mom. She sacrificed her life for me and my two siblings. I, I look after her. I take her to her doctor's appointments and whatever she needs. But, and she's right there with one of my daughters. And if I can stay close to her, that would be good. Because they work and I can watch after my mom.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I think we've had a lot of good discussion. We've heard from the applicant. Thank you for your presentation. Just to move things along, I will open up the public hearing. Sir, ma'am, you can stay seated there just for your convenience if that, if you would like to. But we'll open up the public hearing and ask if there are any members of the public who would like to come forward, offer any comments. And when you get to the podium, if you could give us your name, relationship to the property?
My name is Anna Lari. I live at 4055 Morningdale, which is right the street behind them, across the street there. I know you've heard a lot of reasons why they want to stay there, but looking at it as their neighbor, they have a professional builder who was part of the build just a few years ago. The property is beautiful. It was, it, they've had many people come up and, you know, ask them about the architecture of it. It's very professional, clean, and it keeps with the integrity of the neighborhood for those reasons. Business reasons as a neighbor, I am for their addition of their first-floor bedroom.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Feel free to step forward.
Good evening. My name is Ally Paloney. I live at 4040 Morningdale. So my backyard backs into their yard and I'm also their daughter. And I am in favor of that, obviously because they're my parents, but not just that, but they did just move into the home less than five years ago with the intention of retiring there and being with their grandchildren. They had no idea that my father's medical condition was going to get worse. I watch him struggle to walk from one end of the yard to the other. So I can't imagine going up and down the stairs every single day, what that would be for him. So I do, I am in favor and I do feel that this is a medical necessity.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anyone else. Ma'am, would you like to come forward? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Clark. I live at 4058 Morningdale. I'm next door to Ally Paloney and our property's back up to her parents. I have enjoyed the improvements they have made to their property. It is a gorgeous residence now and I would like to have this appeal approved so that they can get the addition put on their house and be able to live there forever in comfort. I am in total support of this.
Thank you.
I have wonderful neighbors all the way around me and I'd like to keep it that way.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to ask Ms. Ferenz. I know she said earlier that we had someone else on the Zoom meeting. Is that individual still with us and wanting to speak as to this petition?
So Chair Bosenbrook, we still have an attendee that they would like to speak on this topic. If they could raise their hand. I do not see them raising their hand, so we are done.
Thank you very much. And we don't have any correspondence or voicemails as to this petition, so I'll close the public hearing. And at this point, I will bring it back to the board for discussion. We've already had a fair amount. But is there anything else anyone would like to discuss? Mr. Green?
Two things. One, I'm very sympathetic to your situation. In the past year, I've watched my father decline as well. He's been living alone and, not in Troy, but he's been living alone. And then earlier this year, he started falling and having episodes and has gone from being fully independent and fully mobile to, we have now moved him out of his home. He's using a walker. He's spent two weeks in a hospital. He's in a residential home and he now does in fact live in Troy over by Oakland Mall. And so I very much understand your request. I'm still working back and forth through our requirements, but I think a quick summary of this might be, they are currently grandfathered, the petitioner is currently grandfathered through time and accident into a functional residence. And what we're looking at here is primarily a codification of that, but very much also changing the use of that property. And that's, that second part is the tricky part. So I'm thinking about it, but I think that sums it up in my head.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Other members wish to be recognized? Mr. McCauley?
This might be a question for the city attorney or Mr. Evans. If we were inclined to approve the addition, but not the shed, is that a possibility?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
No, no, this is a request for a use variance. So basically you're allowing a use that would not otherwise be allowed. So if you are granting the use variance that is requested, then anything that would be allowed on a residential property would be allowed. So you could not prohibit the shed.
That's, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And just for my clarification, that's a use that's already, it's already being used for. So we're kind of, it's a little bit of a bureaucratic dance, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about here. It's already being used for residential property and the city has let them build the residential property on it previously. And now we basically have to formalize or not formalize whether it can be a residential property?
I see Mr. Evans is on there.
Yeah. Well, specifically, I don't think we're formalizing because the use is non-conforming so they can continue the residential use, subject to our non-conforming use provisions in the zoning ordinance. But really the question is, you're not allowed to add on to a structure that's devoted to a non-conforming use or enlarge the non-conforming use by the addition of additional structures. So that's really the best way to answer your question that I can think of. Mr. Desmond?
All right, thank you.
One quick question.
Yes, Mr. Rahman?
So this is for Mr. Evans. The way the, the applicant is proposing, are we violating any setback requirements for that area?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
The, the true hardship that I see with this is the fact that even if they said, okay, we give up, we're not going to use it as residential, the property itself is too small. You can't put a 7-Eleven on it. By itself, it's not usable commercially because it's too small. The only real choice they have, unless they can acqui, not even selling it, they have to acquire more land to be able to use it in neighborhood node. So it's basically, they, either they, like you said, one of my colleagues said already, is they either have a choice between selling it and moving somewhere else to be able to use a reasonable use, which is a first-floor bedroom, or they get a variance. And I think their request is very reasonable for the area. It is right on the edge of the neighborhood node, closest to the neighborhood, which is if there is an extension of a non-conforming, it's best to have it on the periphery and not in the middle. And based on the testimony we received, I would like to move this item for approval and see if we can get a second.
A second.
Mr. Desmond, seconds. Mr. Eisenbacher's motion. Any further discussion? I think we're ready, oh.
Can you state the?
I'm sorry?
Can you state the motion, please?
Sure. So as I understand it, Mr. Eisenbacher can correct me. It would be, the motion would be to approve the variance, the use variance request for the various reasons stated on the record by Mr. Eisenbacher and others in support. And this would require a five-vote affirmative to, to grant the use variance request.
Yes. It's basically, page 44 is the list of the, the variance request that we'd be granting.
And this would be specific to the request for the building, excuse me, the bedroom addition, and also they've requested the shed?
Yep.
I'm sorry, Mr. Green, you're disagreeing?
It's for the use.
It's a use variance, so it's not the bedroom and the shed. Once the use variance is granted, the land could be used for anything that would be allowed. So that could be a shed, that could be a new shed later, that could be rebuilt garage at some point, or rebuilding a new house on it that conforms within the residential non-use, non-conforming use otherwise held in our, in our code. So it's not specific to those builds, but, yeah.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Kankri?
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Green? Yes, Mr. Green?
The only one that I'm struggling with is number two, and if anybody can clarify how they are squaring that one, I'm open to it, since we are required to.
Mr. Eisenbacher's raising his hand to help you out with number two.
The big thing is, is it may consider for the last sentence. So we don't have, have to consider those items. The big condition is the fact that the city gave them permission to do the expansion in the 2015 timeframe, which is very recent. And throughout that zone, the neighborhood node, this is the only property that has been recently developed. All the other properties, if you look at the aerial map that is on page, I just lost it, page 47, they have, they have not had any recent development, or they are undeveloped as the two properties are closest to the corner. So in the entire neighborhood node, there's currently no commercial development, and there's five houses. This one is on the perimeter, right next to the neighborhood, as a transition to the neighborhood, and it was recently permitted to be enlarged.
Yes, Mr. Green, do you have a follow-up on that?
I do. So while we do not have to hit those four specific points, those are mayes, we do have to prove, or the applicant has had to have proved, and we must agree, that there are certain features or conditions of the land, not the property, pardon, not the build, that are not generally applicable throughout the zone that make it impossible. And I don't see anything extraordinary or unique about the land.
This is not dimensional variance, right? Small?
No.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Evans?
Pursuant to a comment, I think, Mr. Green made, the department's view on this variance request is specifically to allow the additions, the use of the additions, as proposed in what you see before you. It's not a blanket request to allow any specific future additions, or, you know, say they wanted to add more rooms or more things, more accessory structures, they would have to return back to the board for use variance for those structures. It's not a blanket that just automatically makes the use of this property conform, specific to what's requested. I just want to clarify, clarify.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry. I'm going to disagree with that because, again, it's a use variance. It's a use variance to allow it to be used as a residential property. So, so it is possible that they could tear down this house. I don't think it's likely to happen, but it is possible that they could tear down this house. And again, as was what mentioned beforehand, nonconforming properties, you want to have them ultimately eliminated. That's the, that's the goal, so that you can comply with the zoning with any new development. So I just, I wanted to make sure that that was clear. I think that, that it could be used for residential properties if you do grant this use variance. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And then also, I just wanted to make sure, too, that the, the conditions for use variance, I want to make sure that the board understands. The second condition is that the condition or situation justifying the use variance is unique to the property and not commonly present in the general vicinity, and such condition or situation makes it impossible to earn a reasonable return on the property. The unique conditions or situations include potentially exceptional narrowness, exceptional topographic concerns, use or development of the property adjoining the subject property creates a unique condition making it impossible to earn a reasonable return on the property, and/or any other extraordinary physical situation affecting the ability to make a reasonable return on the property. So I just wanted to make sure, because it is different, the use variance standards are different than the dimensional variance standards.
Okay. Thank you for the clarifications. Mr. Ramon?
Yeah, just to say that again, that the city made a mistake, and now there is no bedroom, right? So is there not a difficulty that was not created by the applicant here? And, and this is something that I want to just say as my, just plain statement, but just one quick question. The house is still in neighborhood node, right? So maybe we, the city attorney, you know.
Or maybe Mr. Evans would be able to help you answer that.
What is that?
Maybe Mr. Evans would.
Yeah. See, the house is still in the neighborhood node, so if this house is sold, then it will have all the zoning requirements, right? Is that, is my question, Mr. Evans, you want to answer that?
Is your question?
So if this house is sold to somebody else, the property is still within the neighborhood node.
Right.
So if a person wants to build another house, they have to come to zoning board if there is a use variance. I'm just trying to clarify that.
Yeah, because if they wipe the house out, it has to be used in accordance with the existing underlying zone.
Mr. Ramon, is your question if the use variance is approved or if it's denied?
If the use variance is approved.
And then?
And then the, this current applicant, the current resident is making the change, you know, and then after, say, 20 years, 30 years down the road, somebody sells the house to another person, that person can not make a new house. They can or cannot?
So, so.
They have to, they can, they have to get, they have to come to zoning board again, right?
So my, I guess my understanding, based on what we've just heard, is they would be able to build, the, the new owner would be able to build a residential structure because now that use is, the use variance has been granted and it runs with the land forever?
Yeah, that's actually what I thought I heard the city attorney say.
Mr. Eisenbacher? Donald, does that answer your question? Do you?
Yeah, no, I answered my question.
Okay. There is one practical wrinkle to that, insofar as the commercial land is generally much more valuable than the residential land. So there's an incentive for a developer to come in and purchase all these properties and combine them. But that's not in front of us. It's this property owner trying to use the property as they've currently used it with the request for continuing to use it under, with a, with a change.
Anyone, I know, so just to, I guess, recap, we do have a motion pending with a second to approve the use variance request. Is there any further discussion that anyone would like to have? Mr. Kangry?
I just want to add that the applicant was recently allowed to make a renovation to the property. And so implicitly, it was kind of treated as a residential property, implicitly. If they had come and gone through this process, they probably would have been turned down because it would have been a denial of use variance, but they did not go through that process. The city did not ask them to go through the process, but by granting them the, the permission to renovate the property implicitly, the city kind of allowed them to continue to use it as a residential property. I think it's kind of already happened, but it happened implicitly, and I don't know if we can just go back on that. I mean, but that's kind of weighing very heavily on me, that the city already allowed them to use it in that fashion.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I'm sorry. So looking at this, I have a question related to the motion and covering that point two for, I think, certainly, City Attorney Bloom. Conditions of the land, can that include variances attached to the land? Does that include the phrase "conditions of the land"?
So are you asking if you can impose conditions that would not allow for any variances to be granted?
No, so this is specificity, not specificity, how, how point two would apply. So the applicant must prove that there are certain features or conditions, conditions of the land that are not generally applicable throughout the zone. So in this case, as has been noted by my colleagues, there has been an accidental but implicit use variance, not granted, but applied to the, the land as opposed to the rest of the district. Is that something that would be accurately phrased as a condition of the land, or is that, that out of scope for that, if that's a term of art?
Mr. Chair, actually, that is a board determination, so that is something that you have to determine whether or not element two has been satisfied.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, I just, I'll add my comments. I, I have to go back to the specific, so this is not a dimensional variance, it's a use variance, which we've repeated many times. So the, the six requirements, we're supposed to, supposed to be a finding that all the conditions have been met. And I don't know, I don't believe as to the first element that it's been demonstrated that you cannot use this, this property as, as zoned in neighborhood node. I don't think that's been shown. And I, again, going back to conditions that are specific to the property, I don't think that's been demonstrated as to the second item. So I, again, you know, as with the other petition, understand the complexity and the big picture, but I, given where we are and what we are charged to do, I can't support the variance request. Is there anyone else that wants to speak, or I think we're?
I have one statement, and that is, part of the concept, I mean, this is a residential area that is now earmarked to be pushed towards commercial use. The fact that they will be using it residentially with an extension on it does not preclude the fact that in the future, a commercial developer might take it and make it commercial. So should something like that occur, like Mr. Eisenbach alluded to, it would most likely be a strip mall sense where multiple properties would be purchased and demoed and converted to commercial. In that context, the, the weight is not on the residential side, it's on the commercial side. And all of those goals are still perfectly viable, even keeping with this variance for the use of, their use of it until such time, 20 or 30 years, when somebody decides to put a strip mall there. So the fact that we're not changing the zoning of it to say, okay, now this is residential, thus eliminating the possibility of that becoming commercial in the future, that's not what's occurring. That can still be used as commercial property, and if it were to convert to commercial, there is not a lot of residential owners that I'm familiar with who would be pushing really hard to reuse that property residentially after it's gone to that level of commercial, which is the type of commercial that we develop, for the most part, here in Troy. So I, I see this, I don't see the harm in letting them use it for this use until such time as that commercial, full commercial development goes and takes over that area, because it did initially start as a residential area. It was all residential, there was houses there, there've been houses there for, you know, since houses were put up. So at, in the future, still having that ability, if this was a rezoning, I'd have an issue. Like, all right, well, it's commercial, now we're turning it into residential, that'd be a thing. But if we're just using it for what it already was until such time that it is no longer that, which it still can be, I, I guess I just don't see the downside to that for its, its current use. I guess I just see that the weighting, like Mr. Eisenbach said, the value of commercial property is higher. So anybody going in there for that use is going to be acquiring the property and putting it to a higher and better use financially as a, as a commercial property. So it's not, if, if the reverse were occurring, I would have more of an issue, but that's not what I see here. I see this being an ongoing use of what it's already been, with an imputed, you know, acceptance by the city, because they, you know, maybe it's an error, or it's obviously an error, you know, it wasn't supposed to have passed, but it did. So, and now this is where it's at, and until such time, someone shows up and buys the whole block, I think that I don't see any issue with it, which is why I seconded the motion. So that's my position.
Mr. Green, do you have any final comments?
Final comment. As, as the son of a Vietnam veteran, disabled in combat, who has lived through a similar situation, I want to say yes. I want to square this circle. As a member of this board with these specific requirements, unlike the other one, which was literally more fluid, not requiring meeting all five points, this one requires meeting all six. I can't, and I'm sorry, but I will be voting no.
Okay, I think, Mr. Eisenbacher?
I alluded to one point in terms of criteria number one in our agenda packet, which is the site cannot be reasonably, the site, which is, means this particular residential property, and the size of this residential property, cannot be used for any of the uses allowed within the current zoning district designation. If we look on page, scrolling up, page one, page 49 at the top, the second item, which has a red line on top of it, is residential lodging. Going through these items, number two, residential lodging, do we know the minimum lot size and setbacks that we'd need for that one, along with office or institution size and setbacks? Auto or transportation? Because this property is very small, I don't believe any of these six items that are the permitted items for that one compared to number one, which is the non-permitted use, fit on a very small residential-sized property, which is the answer for number one, is you can't use any of these other uses because they all require a larger property. So it's, I mean, it's a nuts and bolts question of can this small residential property be used for residential, office, auto or transportation, retail, entertainment service, miscellaneous commercial, or industrial? And I believe no. We haven't had any evidence presented that it can be used for any of those items, which means item number one in our criteria is met.
I just want to add that, you know, we recently passed, I think, two changes that would require certain height and some setback rule, right? Which would make it even worse, you know, to make it a viable commercial, commercial property.
Thank you for everyone's discussion and comments. Ms. Ferenz, I now believe we're finally ready for a vote, and I guess just to.
Okay.
Reiterate, this is, the motion is to approve the use variance request presented by Mr. Eisenbacher, seconded by Mr. Desmond, and for the reasons stated by the proponents on the record.
Mr. Kangry?
Yes.
Mr. Bossonbrook?
No.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
And Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Motion passes. Five votes to two. Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's participation, and with that, that will take us out of item number five, and we'll move on to item number six. Any communications? Mr. Evans? I don't believe so. Not hearing anything, not seeing anything in front of us. Then move on to number seven. Any miscellaneous business? Mr. Eisenbacher?
Based on the first item that we had on our agenda this evening, and my. Based on the first item that we had on our agenda this evening, and my question to city staff that we received an answer, thank you. Thank you for providing this answer, that there was currently no explanation in meeting minutes or elsewhere for the 600 square foot minimum area for one bedroom apartments. I would think that based on the evidence we received this evening and what's going on in markets, that this should be looked, looked at by the planning commission. So if you'd please take this back to the planning commission for possible change, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Will do then.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenbacher. And no other miscellaneous business. I'll move to number eight. Is there anyone who has any more public comment? Not seeing or hearing that. We'll move to number nine, which is we will adjourn for the evening. See everybody next month.